Good evening, and welcome to the Marquette City Commission meeting for Tuesday, October 9th, 2012. Could you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Deputy Clerk Hazaras, could you please call roll?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Nemee?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Commissioner Saint Ange?
Here.
Commissioner Snyder?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protem DePietro?
Here.
Mayor Keevila?
Here. Commissioners, Commissioner Saint Ange called me earlier today and he's stuck out of town for business. Could we have a motion to excuse him?
I will motion to excuse Commissioner Saint Ange.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion to excuse in a second. All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Under Agenda Changes, I'm going to pull Item I off the Consent Agenda. This is in regards to the Safe Routes to School Project. I know there's some people here that want to speak on that, so we'll give them an opportunity to speak before we do that, and I'll put that as Item Number Seven. Are there any other changes? Commissioner Schneider?
Yeah, I would like to request to change that we also remove J from the Consent Agenda, the PUD agreement with the Viridia Group.
All right, we'll list that as Item Number Eight. Any other changes? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Ryan?
I move the agenda be approved as amended.
And Commissioner DePietro supports. All in favor, say yes.
Yes. Yes.
Opposed?
All right, I'm gonna read through the different boards and committees that we have openings on. We've got more people putting in apps, but we could use a handful more. We've got Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, Hospital Finance Authority, Investment Advisory Board, Local Officers Compensation Commission, the Market Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, the Market Housing Commission, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Planning Commission, Regional Rec Authority Business Plan Ad-Hoc Committee, Sister City Advisory Committee, and Sustainable Community Ad-Hoc Committee. So, we've got a lot of seats open. If anyone out there is interested, we'd love to have you. Again, you can contact the City Manager's Office or go to the website www.mqtcty.org. That's it for announcements. We're going to move into our first presentation, which is a check presentation, our favorite kind, from Superior Land Soccer Association by Mr. Robert Anderson, Mr. Brian Goodroll, Gloria LaPointe, Jim Mackey, and Amy Nemee.
Well, here we are again. Every year, probably this is our 12th time annually that we've come here to present a check. Those of you who probably don't know why we are presenting checks, it's because the city has so graciously lent us money, the Superior Land Soccer, to both build the fields that we have built in partnership with the city many years ago, at least 10 years ago. And now we have built the pavilion, the Kaufman Pavilion, and the other improvements at the Kaufman site now. And we have a surprise for you, John. We not only have our usual presentation of about maybe $10,000 or $11,000, but we have the final check, the final $24,000 to pay back the loan. With me are Jim Mackey, the current President of Superior Land Soccer, and John Sandy. He's got the check. He's the prior President of Superior Land Soccer. So I'll let them say something.
John, first of all, I want to thank the Commission and the city for all the support they've given to our youth soccer programs over the years. I was just talking with Jim and our youth, the Superior Land Soccer Association this year had 753 recreation players and 200 travel players. So when you factor in the other soccer programs that are out there, there's over 1,000 children that are playing soccer in the Marquette area. And it's with facilities like we have out at Kaufman River Park that we're able to do that. And with the help of the city and with many, many volunteers, we were able to get the pavilion built, and now we have permanent bathrooms out there. We've got a great facility. We've got some extra parking that has happened in there. And with great pride, we're gonna present a check for $24,765, which is the amount that we show would finalize our final payment to the city for the interim loan that they gave us to finish the Kaufman Pavilion. So I want to present that to John, and again with our thanks for all the support. We hope that's a, this is just the beginning of a great program that we're able to offer to the youth of Marquette.
Well, you know, on behalf of the City Commission, I want to thank each and every one of you. This is a fantastic partnership. It has been from the inception. You guys have kept your word continuously. I remember, I think the first meeting I had as a Commissioner, you guys were here handing us checks. And it's been every year since. It's paid in full. Thank you, and thank you for what you do for our community. It means the world to our kids, so, thanks.
Thanks.
You know, if anyone questions what makes this community great, it's organizations and people like that that volunteer and work hard to make this a better place, so hats off. Next up, another volunteer. We have a presentation on the Prescott Marina by Harbor Advisory Chair Bob Frazee. Welcome up, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor Keevila.
Did you bring a big check too?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
I just need to bring this computer up, though. Someone that can log in or help me out with this. We'll get Carl up there to help you. All right. I know it's on here, so. I thought it would be helping ready. Sorry about that. Looks like I'm gonna need the... Can she run it?
Just having a few technical issues here.
I wasn't earlier this week to make sure this is working, so. It was all right earlier this week, but, well, as the mayor said, my name's Bob Frazee. I'm the current Chair of the Harbor Advisory Committee for the City of Marquette. I just wanted to take a few minutes tonight to address the City Commission as to where we're at with the Prescott Marina project. As you know, there were some additional issues and findings that was brought to the, to our committee's attention late last fall, back in December. And we did have to do a few things as far as rephasing that project, so. That's why I'm here tonight to just kind of update the Commission as to where we're at today and how we're moving forward. If you want to just move ahead one, because there we go. Just to give a little bit of background as I get into this, just where we're coming from and what we've been doing with Prescott Marina. Originally, you know, it was determined that the Prescott Marina was in some dire need of some maintenance and upkeep from, everything from dredging that needed to be done because of decreasing lake levels, the pier structures were deteriorating. So originally, and back in 2010 in February, AECOM was brought in to do an engineering study and come up with a report. And what came out of that was an actual phased project to kind of, I guess you'd say, redo the Prescott Marina. And so rather than just go in, take the entire marina, put an entire new one in, it was phased out over a five to an eight-phase project. After that, we started moving forward with submitting permits and requests with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers with construction permits and also funding permits to get approved by not only the City Commission, but also the State Waterways Committee. As we were doing all the grant applications and getting the construction permits in the fall of 2011, when the city was moving forward with operationalizing this plan, the city engineering came back to us with some findings that they brought up that were very concerning with the marina. And from the standpoint of they weren't sure if moving forward with the phase, with the project phased as it was, was gonna be, was gonna be realistic and able to do. In December of 2011, we had a special meeting with ourselves, the Harbor Advisory Committee, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and also the Prescott Advisory Committee was all invited to this meeting. And basically, it was a presentation from city engineering and Parks and Rec staff to go over some of the issues that were, that were brought forward to us. Into the next slide now, Chris. January 2012, obviously, this brought up a lot of discussion at our Harbor Advisory Committee meeting that month. As we moved into February, the City Commission approved, approved a motion to have the Harbor Advisory Committee reevaluate the Prescott Marina project to look at all the issues that engineering brought forward, which I'll get into here as I move forward in the presentation, and how we need to maybe possibly rephase this project. As we move forward, the Harbor Advisory Committee throughout the month of March of 2012, we conducted a few special meetings in conjunction with our regularly scheduled ones. There's a lot of information to go through, a lot of technical information from city engineering as to what kind of issues we had going on and how we were gonna, how we were gonna move forward with this. So that brings us to our problem and our main issues. I think the first couple meetings we've had, we spent a lot of it just kind of digging into the actual problems and issues with the marina. And the biggest issues we ran into was, which is actually the first phase of the project, which was dredging the entire marina, we ran into a few issues with that, and also we had some significant issues with the piers and the structural integrity of those piers. And as we move forward, you'll see how each of those play into each other. I'm moving forward, Chris, thanks. So our findings, I'll hit the first big, one of the biggest issues was the dredging. We had to kind of take a little different focus on how we were gonna dredge this marina. And there was a few things that came into play with this. The original Phase One was dredging the entire marina. That was all, everything, in and around all the piers in front of the boat launch. The marina as a whole was gonna get dredged. We took a look, we focused, took a lot of time and focused on dredging as far as how we needed to move forward with that. We did determine that there was, originally, there was thought to be a lot of shifting of sand and sediment migrating and sholing throughout the marina. After looking at a lot of old photographs, probably back into the early 80s to present, and taking a look at the marina as a whole, we actually kind of decided and came to the conclusion that that was not as significant of a problem as originally proposed. There is some of that going on in the marina. I have a photo coming up here that'll kind of show it, but we actually determined that a lot of the area of the marina had never been dredged, and the area I'm talking about is right next to the current boat launch. And of course, there has been some natural sediment moving around in there, but it's not as significant as originally thought. Another big factor with the dredging issue was just simply the lake's superior water level declining throughout the years. So, rather than it actually being sand and shifting of silt and sediment on the bottom. Another big problem with this also is deterioration of the fixed piers. There's kind of a reason that I'll get into here a little more as we move forward, but we were actually, right now, we're really not able to actually dredge next to those piers because of the actual deterioration of the pier structure. And you'll see that, I'll get into that here in a couple minutes. Moving forward, Chris. Along with that, obviously, with the dredging, you know, funding's actually been a big focus of ours throughout rephasing this project. You know, money doesn't come from nowhere, so we took that into consideration. And, and again, just moving forward, you know, some of the pier structures, a dire condition of them with the dredging. And so, as we move forward, I'm skipping ahead here to another one, Chris. Another issue was the original dredging depth. Go back one more, there should be a... Well, I'll keep moving as Chris goes, there should be another slide back from that that I have here. The original dredging depth was actually to an elevation of 593. Throughout our, as we looked at this project, the actual depth of the bins was actually at 594.5, so the original dredging was actually gonna probably be too deep for the actual depth of the, of the fixed bin structures, which we think is, the big reason for that is the lake level, lake levels decreasing. So, that was also taken into account as we move forward with that. If you want to just move forward, Chris, I don't see that one in there. This is just a quick photo, it kind of gives you an idea. This is near the break wall, the breakwater area in that corner of the marina. This is actually, this kind of shows, this is the one area of the marina where we think there's actually some natural shifting of sediment and such, which has also been brought over through that breakwall through storms and that, so. So that's a big issue with the dredging. As we're moving forward now, I'm also gonna get into the other major problem that we discovered, and like I said, they both come, they both come into play here, was the existing fixed piers. The piers that are in the Prescott Marina, which this slide shows kind of the construction of those piers, it's an actual bin wall system, so there's two metal walls on each pier, and inside of those walls, it's actually filled with gravel, sand, and rock. What's happening is there's been some serious deterioration of these piers. Move forward one, Chris, please. Go ahead one more. This photo, or, I'm sorry, this photo shows the significant deterioration of the piers. If you notice on both sides, the, kind of the middle of the pier where you can see sunlight going through, you're not supposed to see that. It's supposed to be a solid structure like you see on both sides. And that's happening throughout the entire marina on all these fixed piers. These bin walls are completely deteriorating, not only above the water level, but they've also done so at the bottom of the water level. You want to move forward, Chris? Okay, and along with this, with these bin walls deteriorating, what's actually happened is all the fill that was inside of these piers, all the gravel and rock that was put in there, has actually spilled out into the water now. In doing so, it's caused the fixed piers themselves to actually shift and twist and go with this movement. In fact, if you go up to the Prescott Marina and actually physically walk on these docks, none of them are really actual level to walk on. There's only one where we've had some significant problems and had to close part of it down because it's unsafe to walk out there, but it's, and it's also caused other things to happen. Some of the light poles and utilities out there have actually sunk down, some wiring has needed to be redone. There's areas where pipes have broken that have needed to go in and fix, and it brings up some significant issues, because for example, on the middle pier in that marina, we have gasoline, there's a sewage line going out, and our concern is if these piers move any more than they already have, that it's gonna, it could compromise those utilities, causing some serious issues, so. Want to move forward, Chris? Yeah, this one right here kind of shows you one of the light fixtures that has actually sunk down as a result of the, of the dock twisting and settling, that newer patches of concrete are areas where they've actually had to go in and fix some of the piping going out there, so. This is one picture of our, it's kind of the south dock, the farthest one over towards the breakwall. This was the one I was mentioning that we've actually had to close off due to safety concerns. I'd say probably more than half of it's actually closed off from use right now, so. Again, this is just like I explained before, how the, how the fixed piers are built and structured. Do you want to move on, Chris? You can go ahead, yeah. Pretty much covered this, if you want to move forward. These are a little out of order from what I have here, so. All right, this here, this is basically where we're at today, and this is where I'm kind of getting into. I kind of touched on some of the dredging issues before, and this is where the dredging comes into play with our, with our pier system. What's happened, like I said, is these bin walls have completely, a lot of them have completely deteriorated. So all this gravel and rock and stone that was filling that up at one time has completely spilled out, and this slide shows how that, how all that sediment has spilled out. And what's happened, like I said, with all these piers settling, all that was not supposed to spill out, but at the same time, what's happened is a lot of that's actually created kind of some natural stability for those piers. And in working with city engineering, what we've kind of determined is that with that spilling out like that, and it's actually creating, it's stabilizing that dock. And what we're concerned happening is if we went with the original dredging plan of dredging next to all these piers, and if we actually dred, dredge all that out, it's gonna actually lose a little bit of stability that it has. Our concern was if we do dredge next to it, we're pretty for certain that it's gonna cause an actual completely, a complete collapse of the pier system. So if we would have actually moved forward with Phase One as it was and dredge next to all those docks, I don't know if any of them would be there after doing so, so. Again, just another slide showing how that's, all that fill within there has settled next to those docks. Want to move? This is just kind of a photo showing a lot of the sediment that spilled out and is right next to those docks. Move forward one more. All right, perfect. So, in saying that, some of the big issues that we came up with, especially with these deteriorating pier systems, one is, you know, obviously, public safety, which kind of goes into an environmental impact. I think if we did dredge next to those docks, especially with our middle pier, I mean, like I said, we have fuel, we have sewage, we have electricity going out there. If it were to cause a collapse or any sudden, any more sudden shifting in that, you know, we could be looking at possible fuel spill, sewage spill, and such. Also, in rephasing this project, we've obviously taken funding into serious consideration as we move forward. And then obviously longevity of the marina. You know, we want to see this marina stay and move forward, it's part of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan to maintain this project and move it forward. And another thing we took into serious consideration is disruption of current marina holders, seasonal, more focused on the seasonal slip holders up there. We do have some play and some availability to move them around within the marina, but if we lost all those piers or took all those piers out at once, we would have nowhere to put all these boaters, so. Okay, so moving on, our recommendation, I kind of have basically here our original five-phase plan and our recommended phase plan. Can you move forward one more, Chris? I just, yeah, there it is. Okay, this is what I'm looking at, so. Basically, this is what, what we've come up with in taking all this into consideration and how to move forward with this. Phase One is still gonna be dredging, however, we've changed it a little bit. We're still gonna dredge that, there's kind of a triangle area which is just to, just south of the current boat launch and kind of goes up against the Ellison Eye Dock that's along the marina there. All that's gonna get dredged out as originally planned. We're also gonna dredge down by the breakwall, which was in a photo that I showed earlier in the slideshow. And one thing, one additional thing that we are gonna do is we're gonna actually remove, entirely remove that south pier. That's the one, if you remember the photo I showed, that we've had to actually close half of it off because it's not safe to walk out there. There should be very little impact to the boaters as there's room in the marina to shift them around as needed. So, we're gonna dredge all that, we're gonna pull out that, that, that one pier next to the breakwall. We're gonna dredge all the sediment and stuff that's been spilled out of that breakwall, and everything that's left over is gonna have to be dredged out as well, and we're gonna keep dredging towards that middle pier until we actually, in a sense, run out of money. So, basically, the main part of the marina is gonna get dredged next to the boat launch because that's gonna be Phase Two, and that has to be dredged to move on with Phase Two, and that, that south pier completely taken out. We're not gonna dredge next to the rest of the existing pier systems because, as I said, we're concerned about the potential of completely collapsing them. Funding-wise with Phase One, it's really not gonna change, we're gonna stay with the original dollar amount, however, we did have to reappropriate some of those funds because the original phase was absolutely nothing but dredging. Now, we're not only, we're gonna do some dredging, but we're gonna actually remove that pier, so we had to reappropriate some of those funds. And we do have tentative approval on reappropriating those funds. However, it's not gonna, not gonna cost anymore. So, that's where we're at with Phase One. Phase Two is gonna be our boat launch project, that's gonna be redoing and replacing the Prescott Boat Launch and also the parking lot. The parking lot's gonna be completely redone with a little bit, a little bit different traffic flow and parking, so it should flow a little bit better. And again, you know, the dredging, that Phase One is key for that because the boat launch is gonna go farther south than the existing boat launch, so that one can continuously be used as a rebuilding the other one. So, we, it was imperative that we get the dredging of that area done to move on with this. And funding-wise, it's not gonna change. Phase Two is not at all changing, it was a line item, so we weren't able to play with that funding at all. And, you know, I think the committee also felt it was an important project to move along sooner than later, as it's a, you know, it's a boat launch and it's probably the most publicly used aspect of this project, so we wanted to make that a priority as well. And then from there on, you know, going into the other phases, obviously, is to replace and remove and replace the existing pier structures. Phase Three is to replace that south pier that we're actually gonna be removing in Phase One. Phase Four is to remove and replace the north pier, and then Phase Five is to remove and replace the middle pier. Some funding concerns, like I said, most of these phases, the funding's really not changing at all, except Phase One where we're reappropriating some funds, but it's actually not costing anymore. The one change, though, however, there was, was Phase Five, as you can see in our previous slide, it was originally the breakwall, which is, you know, close to 450,000. By removing and replacing the middle pier, we're actually gonna be increasing that by about a $500,000 cost. So 250 of that would come from the city. And I do have to remind the City Commission, you know, it's, this is partially funded by the city, but half of the funding's coming from the State Waterways Commission. And each phase of this project, as it comes up, will actually come up for approval for funding and to move forward with it. So, even though we have the five phases and we know how we want to move forward, you know, a few years from now, when we're in Phase Four, it'll actually come to, to all of you, the Commission for approving for that, and then also the State Waterways Commission for approving that. for approving that. Um, so that's where we're at, um, those were the key issues that we, that we really pointed out and came up with. Um, you know, where we're at today and how we're moving forward, we are moving forward with Phase One. Um, we have a lot of the permits done, we have tentative, um, um, approval on the, uh, on reappropriating those funds to move forward. Um, and, uh, so we are moving forward with that. Tentatively, Phase One is going to be a spring of 2013 project, and then fall of 2014, of course, funding, um, depending on funding approval, we'll be moving into Phase Two. So, we are moving forward with all this. Um, those were our recommendations from our committee. Um, I just want to say, I think we, we did a very thorough job at reevaluating this project and looking into it. Um, this wasn't something, you know, we did one night in one meeting. We, uh, we had city engineering with us throughout all of these meetings to, uh, provide technical and engineering input into this, they did a very good job with that. Um, we also had, uh, Presque Isle, a group I want to mention, a Presque Isle Concerned Citizens Group. Um, it was just kind of a group of boaters from the Presque Isle Marina that came together. Um, we actually allowed three of them to sit with us and, and help us, uh, look at this plan and, and develop, um, our rephasing of this project. Uh, so I think we, uh, we definitely did our due diligence in this, and, uh, um, this is our plan as we're moving forward, so.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Bob? Commissioner Ryan?
I'm not sure I can phrase it just right, but, are the, is the, um, overall project dependent on all of the phases being completed?
No, not necessarily. In fact, we took that into consideration when we were phasing this project, um.
Just hypothetically, you know, if you did the north pier and the south pier, would you have to do the middle pier?
No, absolutely not.
And what would the result of that be?
Well, the, the issue with that, I mean, obviously, we, we would want the project to continue and get done as a whole. Um, our biggest concern with that would be displacing boaters. Um, I, I think if we, we have enough room between, I think, some of the openings in Center Pond Marina, and some of our, some of the space we have in Presque Isle, to shift boaters around for a season if needed. I think, however, especially that middle pier, um, those are some of our larger slips in that marina, um, we would probably look at displacing boaters out of that marina, and not really having a place to put them, so.
And I'm not suggesting we want to do that, I just want to know if we truly have options down the road.
Absolutely.
It's not a case of, well, the south pier's not gonna make it if the middle pier is not there.
Right, absolutely. And that was taken into consideration when we moved forward with this. So one project can happen without the other one coming.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Bob, do, do you have any thought, um, as to, uh, where, um, they're projecting Lake Superior water levels to go? In other words, in the next ten years, next five years, uh, have we had any feedback or any, any prognostication from Corps of Engineers that might give us some guidance on this?
Not really, I don't have any specific information on that. Um, I think, you know, the trend has shown that lake levels continue to go down, so, um, you know, whether that continues or not, I'm not sure. Um, you know, we did take that into consideration when looking at the dredging, you know, I mean, is this gonna be a continuous problem, are we gonna have to redredge in a few years? Um, so, that would be kind of dependent a little bit on lake levels decreasing, but, but yeah, I really don't have any concrete information on that.
Thank you. I think that's all we've got for you, Bob. Thank you for your hard work, and the rest of your committee members as well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, boards and committees, uh, we're gonna welcome our newest member, uh, Dr. Michael Conley. Could you please, uh, meet me at the lectern? Well, Mike is the newest member of the Harbor Advisory Committee, and as you hear, you have a lot of work cut out for you, so. Uh, Mike, on behalf of the City Commission, I want to present you with the City of Marquette Pin, and formally welcome you to, uh, to the gang, so we appreciate you volunteering.
I'm glad to be part of this, thank you.
You bet, thank you. Okay, next up, uh, we've got two appointments, uh, Jacob, Jacob Gutter, Planning Commission, uh, for a term ending two fifteen thirteen, and James Mackey, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, for a term ending one twenty-nine fifteen. Commissioner Neemee?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Jacob Gutter to the Planning Commission for a term ending February fifteenth, two thousand thirteen, and James Mackey to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term ending January twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen.
All right, thank you, we have a motion. Commissioner DePietro supports. Uh, comments, Commissioner Neemee?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Gutter and Mr. Mackey for being willing to, to serve their city.
Thank you, Commissioner DePietro.
I'd just thank, uh, Jake Gutter for coming back on Planning Commission with his experience and expertise, who will help this, uh, commission, and for James Mackey to be part of the Park and Rec Advisory Board. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? I, I will echo that, uh, Mr. Gutter has served with distinction for many years on the Planning Commission, it's great to have him back there, and, uh, Mr. Mackey was just here presenting a check from the soccer group, so, uh, good to have him, uh, continue to stay involved, so. With that, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes? Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next up is public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person, citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda items. This may result in the item being moved up on the agenda at the mayor's discretion, so. Anyone wishing to comment?
Frank Jeff Berido, three fifty East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. John, two new curb cuts recently appeared at Lake Shore Site, one on Fair Avenue, and the other right in front of Shira's Park, only fifty feet north of an existing access, all because of pro- adjacent property owners failed to agree on common egresses. To add to the injury, the developer elevated the northeast corner of Lake Shore Site, which will cause the homes to impose that much more upon the park. For years, the commission was advised to construct berms along the boundary and to set any homes back to provide a buffer, not only for the users of Shira's Park and Lake Shore Boulevard, but for the residents themselves. I think someone else has the floor right now. No one considered the impact of placing an intersection directly opposite the focal point of Shira's Park. The cor- current, uh, correct course of action is to not approve development until optimal egresses are worked out, which this board could better enforce had its members over the course of years adopted legislation to protect our Lake Shore District. This is the consequence of a commission that refused to listen, resulting in the hodgepodge we see there today. Fourteen years later, we feel the effect. Now every group needs a private entrance. For twelve years, this board was advised to buffer the northeast corner to avoid this eventuality. Instead, you allowed clearing to the boulevard, you built a foundation without adequate setback, and already the design error has impacted adjacent land use. Of course, these aren't the twelve-story towers as approved in nineteen ninety-eight, when the commission put the public at the mercy of the housing market to decide whether we'd see those towers. Now you've put us at the mercy of two adjacent property owners who failed to derive a common egress, along such a critical stretch, no less. The same issue exists at South Raley Agro, fourteen years of planning fell by the wayside when a new enterprise emerged in the eleventh hour and changed everything to its own liking. A recent visitor pu- praised a Marquette on our public lakeshore, but added his disappointment in the backs of those fairyland cottages. And he's the one who brought it up. More evidence of this board's disregard for public input occurred on the East Michigan Street Bluff. Following our August twenty-seventh meeting, Mr. Vita DePietro and I visited the formerly wooded site. Mr. Vita since said that he's turned the slopes matter over to the Planning Commission, despite that this remains an open, old business item for the City Commission. May eight, two thousand, the city paid six thousand dollars to fly in two bluff preservation experts. Turns out, they appeared during one of that year's longest agendas. Their presentation was rushed, and the powers that be suspiciously abandoned the item a short time later. The experts stressed the need to establish ordinances to avert the type of damage we now see on East Michigan Street, and also upon a small wetland at the base of the wooded property on the three hundred block of East Crescent Street. We had plenty of room for slopes ordinances on tonight's light agenda. To date, the six thousand dollars our taxpayers spent remains totally wasted.
Thank you, Mr. Veritol. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
My name is Elizabeth Coin, I live at five twelve Norwood Street, and I just came today, um, in support of the Safe Routes to School project, I hope that you will approve it for, uh, implementation tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Carrie Biolo, three three seven Blem Huber. Um, I'm here to speak about the Safe Routes to School, I was one of the parents involved with, um, this project, and I have two children currently enrolled at Bothwell Middle School, including, um, my fourth grader, and we are in a walking district. Um, we don't have the option of taking a bus, and by next week at morning time, it will be dark and become extremely dangerous. Um, it's an issue that, um, I've been concerned with for a long time, and I think we've got the start of a really good solution. Um, and they were out this morning, too, I saw they were putting in a little more extension on Altamont Street, so I hope we continue working towards getting more sidewalks, um, through all of South Marquette. It's really imperative that we get that main street of Menard, um, going, that goes directly to the school. It's like the direct feeder route for the school. Kids are getting dropped off all over the place now, with added, more and more kids at the school. Um, I really think that's the best route that we came up with, and we were really lucky to get this grant money, and I really appreciate the support of the commission to help get the safe routes for our kids to walk to. Thanks.
Thanks, Carrie. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Seeing nobody else, we will move, uh, to the next item. Oh, you bet, Mr. Chapman?
I'm, uh, Bob Chapman, I'm the chairperson of the Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee.
Bob, if we could get your physical address also?
Yeah, nine eighty-five West College.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to make some comments about the, uh, agenda item, uh, dealing with our Presque Isle Park Playground. We, uh, put out an RFP for, uh, to hire a consultant to help us with that, uh, project, and, uh, the agenda item coming up will deal with that. And, uh, we're recommending that the, uh, Upper Peninsula, uh, engineers and architects be selected as that coun- consultant. Uh, the Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee voted on, reviewed these proposals, and voted unanimously to select that consulting firm, for a couple of reasons. Uh, one is that it's a local firm, uh, and they are sensitive to the cul- local cultural issues and the high value that citizens put on Presque Isle Park, uh, and, and the fact that, uh, it's a, it's a real asset to our community. Uh, and UPEA is a, is a local consulting firm, as opposed to one of the other firms, which is a, a firm based in Howland, Michigan. We also think that, um, the Upper Peninsula, um, engineers and architects will realize that this is a playground that is, is designed to meet the needs of all kids. This playground is gonna incorporate universal design concepts, so that kids with disabilities and special needs will be able to use it, as well as, as all other, uh, children. Um, it's gonna be a challenging project, and it's gonna require the expertise of special people like engineers and architects, which this firm brings to the, brings to the, to the table. Um, the Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee sees this as a really exciting project, and, uh, we're hopeful that you, um, approve, uh, the selection of this consulting firm tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move, closed public comment, and we will move to the consent agenda. Uh, City Clerk, do you want to read those items?
Thank you, Mayor. Item A, approve the minutes of the September twenty-fourth, two thousand twelve commission meeting. B, approve the total bills payable in the amount of one million, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and one dollars and thirty cents. C, determine there is no advantage to competitive bidding, approve the purchase of four new drive tires from Pomp's Tire of Marquette, Michigan, in the amount of seven thousand, thirty-six dollars, being the lowest quoted cost. D, authorize the city manager or his designee to sign the agreement extending the lease with Charter Communications for one month for an additional rent payment of two hundred dollars. E, approve the resolution from our Michigan Liquor Control Commission, authorizing a banquet dance permit for one oh five East Washington Street from Daniel E. Torres, DBA Superior Hospitality, Inc. F, award a contract for soil borings for reconstruction projects funded as part of the fiscal year two thousand twelve, thirteen budget, to Tri Media Consultants for lump sum not to exceed the amount of five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. Item G, approve the license to approve a push- portion of the city's right-of-way at four thirty West Hampton Street, and direct the city attorney to prepare the license with commission recommended by city staff on the application. Item H, by resolution, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation for the East Washington Street reconstruction project.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Ryan?
I move the consent, the consent agenda be approved.
Commissioner Schneider?
Support.
All right, Commissioner Ryan, any comments?
They're generally routine items that can be approved in this manner.
Thank you, Commissioner Schneider.
No further comment.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next up, under number five, report and recommendation from the city manager. We have a Father Marquette painting being donated by our own, uh, Marquette resident, Dan Cook, so, I've got the painting in front of me, Dan, if you could meet me right up here? Well, again, Dan is a, a local Marquette artist, and he, uh, reached out to us and said he had painted a beautiful painting, and, and would be willing to donate it to the city if we were to hang it prominently in City Hall, and we are very graciously accepting his offer, so thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Should we unveil it? I know Dan's word graces a lot of walls around this community, and, uh, it will certainly grace the halls, City Hall now.
Your Honor, you're gonna have a motion on that?
Yep, yep. Well, I, I think we will, we gotta first make a motion to accept it, Dan. Anyone want to make the motion? Commissioner Neemee?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll move that we accept the donation of the painting from Dan Cook, and extend our appreciation, Mr. Cook, for donating the painting to the city.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I certainly will second that motion.
Thank you, we have a motion, uh, and a second. Commissioner Neemee, any comments?
Well, the motion pretty well speaks for itself, I, I think it's a, it's a, it'll be a nice addition to City Hall.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I think I would only add that it's really great to be able to tie a, a local artist in with our local history as strongly and as tightly as this, uh, this painting does.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes? Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number six, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding the Presque Isle Park Playground. City Clerk, do you want to read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. The city advised, advertised a request for proposal on August thirty-one, two thousand twelve, to conduct a public planning process resulting in a plan for a new inclusive playground at Presque Isle Park. The main objective is to develop a plan for an inclusive playground while fitting it to the natural and cultural landscape of the park. Other considerations in the plan will include connectivity to traffic patterns, parking, restrooms, non-motorized trails, and other community assets that reside within the park. The city received, received three proposals. Staff reviewed the proposals based on the following criteria: relative experience of personnel, experience in developing inclusive playground design plans, cost references, and the office location. The scores were as follows: Firm Sansclair Recreation, non-conforming bid, which was not considered, UPE Engineers and Architects, four hundred and fifteen, Sanders and Chapsky, PPL, Marquette, Michigan, three hundred and sixty-one. Staff presented their recommendation to the Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee at an October one, two thousand twelve special meeting. The committee voted unanimously to recommend UPE Engineers and Architects as the most qualified firm. Fiscal effect, the Friends of Presque Isle has fundraised eight thousand of all, uh, eight thousand dollars to develop a plan. The Marquette County Community Foundation matches the funds. Recommendation, award, Presque Isle Park Playground project. Foundation matches the funds. Recommendation: Award Prescott Park Playground project to UPE Engineers and Architects as the most qualified consultant for an amount not to exceed $7,750. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Ryan?
I'll move we award the Prescott Park Playground project to UPE Engineers and Architects as the most qualified consultant for an amount not to exceed $7,750.
All right, thank you. Commissioner DePietro supports. Commissioner Ryan, any additional comments?
Well, I think the point was made well by the presentation from the Prescott Park Committee. This is something very special. It's a park that has to be, a playground that has to be uniquely designed for this very unique place in the city of Marquette. I think the organization selected has the background to do that, so I'm pleased to support it.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
This UPE Engineer and Architect is very experienced in this type of playground. It's not just for the regular use of the children, but also for, I believe, the special needs also. So this would be a perfect fit and we thank him very much for doing that. Thank you.
All right, any additional comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, Safe Routes to Schools. City Clerk, do you want to read the background on that?
Thank you, sir. Background: The city commission approved resolution at their May 23, 2011 meeting to proceed with the Safe Routes to School grant application that was made possible by a partnership between MDOT, Marquette County Health Department, Bothwell Middle School, City of Marquette, Marquette Board of Light and Power and Concerned Parents. The grant was awarded to the City of Marquette on July 19, 2011. Since this time, the Engineering Department has been working on programming the project with the Michigan Department of Transportation and developed plans that were approved by the Planning Commission at their March 20, 2012 meeting. The project is an MDOT bid letting schedule for October 5, 2012 and construction is scheduled to be conducted in spring of 2013. Under the grant program, the city of Marquette designs, inspects and administers the project and MDOT advertises, holds the contract and pays the contractor. In turn, the city of Marquette contracts with MDOT and reimburses MDOT for expenses over and above the grant amount. The next step in this process is the signing of these contracts with MDOT. Fiscal effect: The execution of this contract will result in up to $174,938 in grant money to the City of Marquette. This project will require no city match. Recommendation: By resolution, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract with MDOT for the Safe Routes to School project. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, Commissioners, comments, motion? Commissioner Ryan?
I would recommend by resolution we authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation for the Safe Routes to School project.
All right, thank you. Support? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Support.
All right, Commissioner Ryan, any comments?
You know, I want to acknowledge the fact that not everyone agrees with this and I understand why. I think there are some people who will be directly impacted, even though the sidewalks being constructed on are right-of-way. It will affect some in the neighborhood and I understand their concerns, although frankly, I love sidewalks. So, you know, I think in the end it will be a good thing. But I think the bottom line is we need this project. We need an opportunity for kids to be able to walk to school safely. And I'd like to take it beyond that and not that we can do anything tonight, but I hope that this commission will see that we construct that sidewalk on Altamont Street all the way from the overpass to Craig Street. And I think we've got to do that. And I think as part of our ongoing project, we do a lot of sidewalk work and I hope this commission will see fit and whether we, whatever the process is, if we have to go through the Planning Commission, and I assume we do, but I'd like to see that, not now, but, you know, let's make that a goal for the future, that we will have some sidewalks running from on Altamont Street and to Bothwell School. And certainly, this is a very important part of that plan.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I live up in that area and I can certainly attest to the concern and danger for kids going back and forth to school. I mean, that's unquestioned. And then also, I think, is a very real element of adults doing the same thing. You look at people trying to walk along Altamont Street and it's tough. It's bad. It's not good. And I would hope that, as Commissioner Ryan indicated, that we would be able to use this to kind of spring off and do some other sidewalks up there too, especially as we work our way through the budget process and see what we can do to continue to build on this success. I think that would be a very good thing for the citizens of the city, especially in terms of safety and not only kids. Again, use this as an opportunity to go forward. So very, very happy to second the motion.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to echo the comments of the previous two commissioners and also reinforce the need for sidewalks on Altamont. That's a critical area needing sidewalks and the area is barely passable without them.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Well, I'll be another echo. You know, I think the project that we're doing is great. It's something that's really necessary. I lived on Altamont for quite a while and, you know, try and be pedestrian as often as possible and it's hard to walk downtown from that, from that area. Now, back in May when we looked at this, we looked at three potential levels of involvement and it included potentially all the way, running a sidewalk all the way out to Altamont. And from when we were looking at the three options and directed staff to move forward with the grant, I would like, I would request that staff explain why we chose this option for now instead of looking at a larger picture and going with the full sidewalk.
See if I can answer that for you.
This Dennis happened to not be here tonight.
Originally, we did have the three options like you talked about. It basically came down to the funding amount and the state had a cutoff point on the amount of funding they were going to give us. So what we have planned now falls into that funding amount and that's basically why it happened.
Reasonable enough. I appreciate the explanation and I'm glad to hear that the rest of the commission is interested in the future pursuing Altamont Street.
Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. This would be for Chief Engineer Keith Woodington. Could you address any concerns of retaining walls?
Yes. We do have some retaining walls on this project due to the side slopes being so steep. A good example, if anybody can picture it, is over by Genesee Street, just south of Genesee off of Altamont. There's a steep hillside right there. We're going to put a retaining wall in to be able to get our sidewalk to fit into the right-of-way there. I have had discussions with the property owner there and she's more than happy to have that done. She actually might add to the retaining wall to flatten off her yard area. So as far as issues there, she has no issues with it. We do have probably three other areas along Menard Street where we're going to have some smaller retaining walls. These retaining walls will be modular block, probably some type of earth tone and color. If you go over to Grove Street just west of McClellan, you can see some modular type of walls we put in there about 10 years ago, I guess. It'll be something very similar.
Okay, thank you very much. And with that, I'll finish my comment, Your Honor. It seems like there is a amount of people for and opposed to it, but after listening to both sides and the public hearings that we had, I, and I know my fellow commissioners also, I did the same thing as far as driving through that area, walking through that area at the beginning of school days and watching the speed of the traffic and the students heading to school and then crossing the roads to get to their school. Listening to everybody with their opinions, I felt very strongly in the sidewalks that would benefit the students going to the schools in their district. And with that, I think that I was very happy to be able to look at the grant monies. I think this is very, very good reason for us to accept it. And I just want to explain that I would not accept this grant funding only with the perception the money is free as the tax funding grants come from the taxpayers. I'm voting in favor of the grant funding for the project to provide a safe and healthy environment for the young students on their way to school and returning home from school safely. And with this project, I hope that we can continue to put more sidewalks in the area of South Marquette leading to the schools. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Keith, just one more follow-up question. Who is responsible for the maintenance of any of these retaining walls in the future?
That would be the City of Marquette.
Okay. And that's what I thought. I had gotten an email earlier today or yesterday, I forget, I got a handful of them, asking that question, so I wanted to clarify that. I appreciate the people that are passionate on both sides of this issue as to where the sidewalk should go or whether or not we should build it. And I've looked at the report that was put together by some residents and presented to the commission. I've asked our staff. I've asked one of the gentlemen from MDOT about this issue. We've talked to the Health Department. We've talked to the school districts. We've thoroughly vetted this project out and this is the right place to put it and I'm confident of that. We have a grant. Someone is using someone else's money, not City General Fund money, to create a safer route for our children to get to school. We have to do this and I'm glad that the support is here and we can finally get rolling on it. So with that, I'll call a question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up is the Veridia PUD. City Clerk, do you want to read the background? I believe that was item J.
Thank you, Mayor. Background: The Planning Commission received a request from the Veridia Group LLC for approval for a proposed plan development consisting of a mixed-use development that is proposed to be completed in four phases and will have a total of three structures. This PUD received concept approval at the July 10, 2012 Planning Commission meeting. At their meeting of August 7, 2012, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing, reviewed the PUD plan for the Veridia Mixed Use Development and passed down the recommendations for approval to the Marquette City Commission. The City Commission at their September 12, 2010 meeting, conducted a public hearing for the development plan for this PUD, approved the plan and directed the city attorney to prepare the PUD agreement. Fiscal effect: None by this action. Recommendation: Approve the PUD agreement for the Veridia Mixed Use Development and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Schneider, you had asked to have this pulled. Do you want to lead off discussion?
I did, but I'll actually lead off discussion, making the motion that we approve the PUD agreement for the Veridia Mixed Use Development and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign it.
Thank you. Do we have support? Commissioner Ryan?
I'll support the motion.
All right, we have a motion and support. Commissioner Schneider?
I just asked that this be pulled out of the consent agenda because this is a $35 million development in our city at a pretty key crossroads in the city and I didn't feel that it was worth kind of pushing into a consent agenda. I wanted to give our citizens one more option to be able to speak on it if they'd felt necessary or us to be able to discuss it if there's anything else that came up. I just didn't want to see something this big slid through on the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
We've discussed this a number of times and we've all agreed it's a good project and we're happy to see it move forward and quicker the better. So glad to support it.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. That takes us to public comment. Comments should be limited to five minutes.
My name's Dan Gannon, 111 Ramblet Drive. My second home is 1200 Tyranny Bothwell Middle School, since I spend quite a bit of time there also. I'd like to thank the commission and also the city engineers for their support and help with this project. It's one, of course, that there's a lot of passion both ways for and we understand that. We're trying to highlight more physical activities for our students. Three weeks ago, we had a Walk to School Day on a Wednesday. We had 90 students participate. October 3 was National Walk to School Day. We had 120 students and 12 staff members participate. The walking up that hill was a pretty big crew and I got a little scared when I saw the number coming up the hill on the third. So this will go a long way to help that. And Keith, correct me if I'm wrong, but when this grant runs its course, we can apply for another one? Do you know? Okay.
They're nodding their head, yes, they think so.
All right. So again, thank you for your support.
You bet. Thank you, Dan.
My seven-year-old, this is the future of Marquette. I just want to say thank you to the commission for this. I don't think democracy and community is expensive. I don't think you can spend enough on it. And, you know, the schools are what it's all about and if we don't have schools, again, the streets can lead to wherever. But the schools are a critical, critical part of our little community of democracy. Thanks.
Sir, if you could, sir, if you could read your name and address into the record, please?
213 West Nicolay.
And your name?
Bob Thompson.
Thank you, Bob.
Charlie.
Charlie, welcome, Charlie. You did great. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Good evening. Here in Malankin Nate Marquette Drive. What a fabulous community. Paintings by our local artists, fabulous colors that we have in our community, boat tours that are doing, leaf peepers tours and what have you. Just to kind of emphasize, December 1st is coming shortly and that's tax season. As everybody knows, Market General was purchased by Duke. I suspect at some point they will be getting a tax bill. They also have personal property taxes that will be coming off of that as well. And a big question is, will the citizens of our community have their taxes stabilized or will they go down a bit or what the status is on that? And that would be kind of a nice thing to know. That's going to be a great, great deal of money in any format that you look at. The personal property has not been abandoned by the governor at this time and so I suspect that there's a whole bunch there as well for the city on that aspect. And so if, at some point, we as citizens would get some kind of direction on where the city commission would like to go on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second until the room is cleared. Thank you. Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions and this too is for our children. Similar to the Arbor Day proclamation was your September 24th Community Planning Month proclamation. It reads, "Community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community." That hasn't occurred in this chamber, except when a major player addresses you or when many people speak out on the same issue. The proclamation continues, "The full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation," end quote. Yet Flounder's Landing and Lake Shore Site are plagued by Titanic strings of errors. Twelve years of planning went into the South Rail Yard with excellent presentations of layouts and design criterion filled with public opportunity. Many thousands of citizen hours spent before a new group decided the fate of the pivotal location for us. Notice how gorgeous the roundabout is. It would be infinitely more gorgeous if you'd protected the view. Your proclamation continues, "And the declaration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the Planning Commission and citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Marquette," end of quotes. You've just heard your own outline to resolve a matter that has plagued us for the past 15 years. We've seen citizen input routinely ignored even in cases of life and death. No worse consequence exists than in the 2010 loss of life at Pitnik Rocks. Your refusal to learn from these needless tragedies cost nearly four more lives last August and compromised the safety of a coast- tragedies cost nearly four more lives last August and compromised the safety of a Coast Guard crew. What, what are you doing? John?
I'm checking the time.
The rules are that I have to address you and you, you keep, keep padding something.
I'm checking your time. You still have some left.
The ti, the time is less than five minutes.
You're right.
Okay. Okay. Your refusal to learn from needless, only then did, see, now you messed me up. Your refusal to learn from these needless tragedies nearly cost four more lives last August and compromised the safety of a Coast Guard crew. Only then did a lifeguard coast magically appear at the North Flagpole. As it happened, the fire chief... John, what is so funny about death at Pitnik Rocks that you're smirking right now?
I'm not smirking, Frank.
You are. Yes, you are.
If you want to continue, go on. You still have more time.
Yeah. I've, this is all five minutes if it's read. You know, as it happened, the fire chief decided on his own to stage a lifeguard at Pitnik Rocks. This weighs the question as to how neither my June 25th nor July 30th plea ever reached the person in charge. Either you or management need to jot down concerns, especially in matters where we well know that lives are at stake. The citizen involvement that you alluded to in your September 24th proclamation doesn't reach the responsible parties. Lately, I edited my old tapes of commission meetings from the early 2000s, recording over an hour of my comments with adassedly all-male regime still firmly implanted two or three years prior to the recall. Reliving the comments reminded me of the nature we've lost. I apologized to the audience for my tense posture and for not being Dale Carnegie. But in studying those tapes, it's clear there's no better way to express the words than is written and that those words truly needed saying the way they were said. Most evident from the old tapes was the ignored land use information. Also evidenced was the unhealthiness of an all-male board. Even in 2003, I'd already documented recurrent errors. The pattern perpetuates as a revolving door of members work their agendas, ignore errors, and let the time pass until dust accumulates on the public record. With Mr. Rogers' term waning, he's asked again to divulge what land use aspects he doubted last December 12th when he challenged me on and off the record. I answered his concerns. He was asked what difference a person's level of expertise makes so long as the stated principles are viable. The ball is in his court to expand on his allegations so long as he instigated the matter. Technology makes our public record easier than ever to review and find out who said what and when and whether the words make sense. Let us delve into that record. Strange that no one on the commission has ever recommended delving into it. You won't even address matters that concern thousands of us, such as the fireworks decision. Your published excuses aren't cutting the mustard. Please show compassion for the vendors and the charities who lost thousands of dollars on the reckless decision not to delay the show one night. True, the lightning wasn't likely to strike Lower Harbor Park, yet experts say if you can hear it, you're in potential danger. Regardless of risk, you erred by not using the lightning as a reason to postpone the show one night to benefit the vendors, charities, and thousands of would-be viewers. So insane was the decision and your subsequent silence, some question what state of mind the deciding officials were in at 10 o'clock PM on the 4th of July. About 1,000 of us saw the best fireworks show in the last 20 years, if not in Marquette history. Shamefully, most of that $30,000 was wasted on the low turnout. Please get proactive and direct your attorney to revise the event's contract language because as is, you're placing a huge potential liability on us all.
I'll let you finish even though you're over time too. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move to Commissioner comments. Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. Recognize some city employees here on their anniversary. October 6th, Police Officer Chris Saigon has 15 years of service and October 7th, Police Officer Craig Kenan also has 15 years of service in the Market Police Department. On October 27th, Fire Engineer Rental Inspector Brian Talvansari of the Market Fire Department will have 15 years of service. Again, we congratulate these employees on their anniversary within their department. Also, I'd like to remind the Marquette residents of the upcoming brush pickup starting October 22nd through 26th. And then that's followed by the fall leaf pickup starting October 29th through November 5th. So check on the City Channel 21 for dates and routes. Also, I'd like to commend organizer Ryan Reapy and Kevin Thompson, volunteers, sponsors, and hockey fans in attending the 4th Annual Old Timers Hockey Tournament held September 27th through the 30th with 48 teams. Again, we thank all the parties involved to organize this great event. And also during, the city manager, Bill Vitas, comment time, I'd like to have him announce his next community office hours, date, location, and time. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
With this fall is starting out, I'm hoping that we won't have snow on the ground by the time they're picking up our leaves this year. I'd like to use my time to ask a couple of questions. One, of course, the, one of the major issues on the ballot this year as far as the city of Marquette is concerned is the approval of the, a, a new charter. And, and I'm, I'm wondering, you know, if it's appropriate for this commission to take some kind of action indicating whether or not it, it supports this new document. This process was started by this commission. You know, we, we got it started. We said we needed a new, a, a new charter. I'm not suggesting that the city go out campaigning for it, but I'm wondering if, if the, the body responsible for starting the process should be letting the public know if they support the results. And I throw that as a question to the manager, to the attorney, anybody who wants to respond or to any other commissioner, although you have your own turn, I guess.
I'll respond to it. Certainly you can support it. It's, as you said, you started the process moving forward for a reason. You determined that it was appropriate to take a look at revising the charter. And now that that's happened and it's on the ballot, I think you can certainly take a position on supporting it if that's what the commission wants to do.
Well, I guess we can't do that tonight, but I would hope we could put it on the next agenda so that, that we can let the public know. And I, I believe we, you know, I'm not, I don't know if we think it's perfect, but I think it's, I think we think it's a step in the right direction and, and I think we should let the public know how we feel about that. So. Secondly, there's a proposal on the ballot that requires utilities to have 25% of their energy by 2025 by renewable sources. I'm not campaigning for or against this, but I do know that we own a utility and we have no control over that utility. They're an independent group. But I think it would be important for the citizens of Marquette to know what the impact of that legislation or that proposed constitutional amendment would be on the city of Marquette. I'm not an expert on this subject, but you know, I've heard people say that perhaps this is something the, the city of Marquette could not afford. Perhaps we're not able to do that. What happens then? We don't, you know, we're not a large utility that can transfer those costs to, to a large customer base. We're pretty much who we are. I know, I feel very strongly that the Board of Light and Power is a great value to the city of Marquette, having a municipal power service is available to the city. And I would like to know that whether or not we're putting that in jeopardy with this constitutional amendment. I would hope we could hear some, some feedback from the Board of Light and Power, maybe even coming to one of our meetings or, or the next meeting if possible. Or, or perhaps they have some other issue to, some other method of getting that information out. But I think the real questions are, does this put in jeopardy the future of Marquette's power plant? You know, is this something we can afford to do? And if we can't, what are the consequences? I, I'm not, I'm not saying that, that, that is going to happen, but I think I cer, certainly would like to know what the concerns are. So I think that's a very important issue for the citizens of Marquette and I hope we can get some more input into that process. I'll leave it at that.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
A couple of items if I, if I can, Mr. Mayor. October 11th, 6:30 PM at Citizens Forum in Lakeview Arena will be the next visioning session for the city master plan. The others have gone very well. I participated in one of them, at least was present to watch it. And I, I encourage people that are concerned with and focused on the, the future of our city that this is a good opportunity to go there and participate. I think you'll be very impressed with how it's run and, and what previous groups have done because it is a building process from one session to another. I was saddened today to read in the Mining Journal that Dr. Tom Nosse has passed. Tom Nosse was a, a university professor. He was a longtime member of the community. He actually was the chair of the HAC, of the Harbor Advisory Committee, both during the construction of Prescott Island Marina and Zinder Pond Marina. He contributed immeasurably to this community, to this city. And I was very sad to see his passing and certainly expressed my condolences to his family. Piece of good news, though, that I think all the commissioners received from the fire chief, Tom Belt, is that the, the in-service, rather, the insurance service office did an inspection on the city very recently. And as a result of that, the city improved its fire rating from a five to a three. Now, to put that in perspective, of roughly 1,987 Michigan cities, municipalities, units of government, we are now in the top 1.5% for fire protection. Nationally, of the 47,000 units of government across the country, we are in the top 4%. That is huge. It is virtually impossible for us, according to Chief Belt, to get better in fire protection unless we actually put in a fire training facility within the city. And how that will play out for insurance benefits for our citizens, we don't know yet. Obviously, that takes some time to filter down and through. But I think it's, it speaks absolutely volumes about the professionalism of the fire department that we have in the city of Marquette and the folks that are supporting that in, in a variety of ways. For example, the fire department is about half the score, but certainly the water supply is 40% of the score and the other dispatch functions pick up some other percentile too. So it really is a team effort on the part of the city to have reached that very, very commendable goal. And I, again, my, my most sincere thanks to the, the good work of our firefighters and our citizens really should be very, very proud of them. Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just have a couple of quick comments. I'd agree with Commissioner Ryan. I'd like to see a presentation on the 25 and 25 proposal by the BLP if that's possible. And also, it might be nice to have the Charter Commission present us a, a brief overview and proposal on the, on the charter at the next meeting. And I, I would like to see it as an agenda item with a resolution asking the commission to support the, the charter. As the attorney said, we appointed the group. I think they did a, a great job and, and they did everything we asked them to do and, and more in, in a very timely manner. And so I think we should recognize that and, and I would, I can't speak for everyone, but I, I trust that most of my fellow commissioners would agree that we do want this charter to, to be adopted.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
No comments this evening.
All right. Thank you. I want to give a couple of thanks out there. Thanks to Dan Cook again for his generous donation of the picture that will hang here. Dan, lo and behold, is the guy who talked me into public service about a dozen or so years ago. Called me up one day and said, "You ought to serve on the Board of zoning appeals with me." And so I credit him with the, the start. Thanks to Superior Land Soccer. You know, I've been praising this group since I've been on this commission. They have done such a fantastic job of building that facility and working their butts off to raise money to pay it back. And they have given this community an incredible gift. We have by far the finest soccer facilities in all of northern Michigan, northern Wisconsin. We should be very proud of the work that they've done on our behalf. And I just want to remind a particular resident who's here commenting on the fireworks again. The city doesn't put on the 4th of July festivities. We haven't for many years. We don't control them. I know that may be your opinion, but it's far from fact. So with that, city manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just like to again thank the commission for their kind words and continued support. Commissioner DePietro, the next community office hours will be this Wednesday at Peter White Public Library in the public conference room on the first floor from 10 to 12. And we look forward to all the residents who come stop by and share all their kind views. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we're adjourned.